Good evening again. The time is seven oh nine P M and I will now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of our minutes from the January third, twenty twenty four meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you both. Any corrections on those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Under communicat-- oh, no, excuse me. The next item is the acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you Sean. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. So, under communications and correspondence this evening, I-- we had an incident in Portland last night, a very, very serious incident involving a attempted carjacking. There's a, a press release went out today from our police department. Captain Cunningham drafted a, a press release. I'm not going to read the entire press release, but I felt that it was important to talk about our security in town and, and police matters, so I've invited Captain Cunningham to speak at our upcoming meeting at a Board of Selectmen meeting in the executive session to talk about different options that we may have for police protection and other measures in town. So I just wanted this board to be aware of that, that we do take this matter very seriously and we are exploring various options at this time. But we want to make sure that our residents in town are safe and that is, is a top priority for this board as well as our police department who do a fantastic job. And it is not easy these days and it apparently is not getting any easier at all. So more to come on that, but I felt it was important to address that at the start of this meeting. So we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? Is there anyone in the chat? If anyone, it's the time for public comment, so if anyone would like to comment on the, the previous meeting, which was the presentation from the school facilities study that went out? Who's, can do so now? Just a reminder though, it's public comment. We typically don't answer questions at that public comment, that's all. If there's no comment, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on to old business, item seven, which is, it is our second meeting of the month, which means it is our monthly update from the Committee on Solidarity. I believe Liz Habino is with us remotely. Hi Liz, how you doing?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks for having me. So we had a meeting last Tuesday and we were, um, the highlight of the meeting was we had a presentation from Matt Solak. He is a, um, not yet a Portland resident, but soon to be a Portland resident with his family. They're building a home here and he's a police lieutenant in Willamette. But he was there at the meeting representing the, um, the, uh, social work in law enforcement project, S W L E. I sent all of you some information about it and I got your response about that, thanks friend. And, um, it's just a very exciting program. He co-founded it with a social worker, um, a social work professor. Um, she was at Eastern at the time. I think she's at Southern now. Um, it's, uh, it's now a national network and you know, there's all around the nation, there's different, uh, you know, a lot of social work in, in law enforcement, but this is one project that started in Connecticut and, um, started in, I think there was an existing, um, program in Milford and then Willamette was the next, um, town in Connecticut to have it and it's now in many, um, police departments throughout the state. Um, Middletown has, um, a similar type of, uh, it's a little different from what, um, what Matt talked to us about in, in terms of having a social worker that's actually employed by the police department. Um, Middletown, it's Middletown, um, contracts with, I think the Department of Social Services or Department of, um, it might be Demus, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the notes right now, but, um, but it just, uh, he talked to us about a lot of options for, um, having a social worker in, in our town that can come out, um, on calls with police after the police ensure that the scene is safe, then, um, a social worker can come because so many calls are mental health related and are really not, um, you know, in the realm of what the police are trained for, but a social worker is, you know, able to help people in those circumstances and follow up with people and really decreases the number of calls. Um, so it was just, it really excited to learn about that and, um, we, we, we look forward, he sent us some additional information, um, so we look forward. Our committee will review that and, um, we've got that at our next meeting, um, in February and, um, they share some information with the town, with the selectmen, with the police department and just, you know, talk about, talk about options, um, because it is, it, it, you know, even though Willamette is, um, a much, uh, you know, a small city, now that's a small town like Portland, um, there are different options for small towns as well. So, um, just looking forward to sharing more about that. And, um, other updates are, um, we have a Pride event in the works that we expect to be happening in April and we'll get more information out about that soon. Um, we're working on Juneteenth, we will have exciting things in the works for that. And, um, always, um, always we just like to remind folks that we do have some openings on our committee. Our meetings, of course, are open to the public and anyone's welcome to sit in on meetings the second Tuesday of the month, um, currently meeting at seven. So I think that's that and then unless there are any questions or, um, anything that the selectmen are interested in hearing more about.
Liz, do you have a date for the Pride event in April that I can put down?
Um, it's not, it's tentatively for the April twentieth, but when it is confirmed, I will definitely, we'll get that too.
All right, that, that, thank you, that's helpful. And also, did you want to comment on any of the, uh, not, well, the Juneteenth celebration? Any, uh, you want to wait on that stuff, the, the, the tickets and all that? Do you want to wait on that?
Yeah, well, we're, um, yeah, that's lots of different, you know, exciting things, but a lot of it is still tentative too, so we'll probably wait and maybe have more of an update next month, but, um, but we have a lot that we're expecting to be able to, to provide at Juneteenth this year, so it'll be fun.
I know, thank you, you guys have been very busy, I know. Any questions for Liz? All right, thank you Liz.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to item B under old business, which is appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Is there any appointments? Appointments? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have our Portland Library Director here, Jennifer Billingsley, who is coming today to talk about the library's new strategic plan. I should also add that we have our library chair, Laurel Steinhouser, here as well. So thank you both for being here and welcome Jen.
Excellent, can I adjust this or will I break something?
Go ahead.
Beautiful. I'd just like to ask. So I have handouts, so I'm gonna walk around very briefly, uh, to share those with folks and I do, I should have enough for everyone in the audi-- uh, here, not at our, not at our home audience, but our, um, our crowd that's here today. So hello, thank you so much for having me today. Um, so we, we have our new strategic plan. That was the charge when I was hired. I knew that the current, uh, library strategic plan was going to expire at the end of two thousand twenty-three and so we did it. It was passed by the library board on December twenty-first. Um, this is a, the results of not only, definitely not only my own work, as many of the Board of Selectmen know, I, I had one-on-one interviews with the sitting, the current sitting board of selectman members, um, when, uh, in the fall. So a lot of community input went into this plan. And so it has been condensed into a trifold. The, uh, what we, what we ended up with was a new and updated purpose and vision, so a mission and vision statement, which I'm going to read aloud. The Portland Public Library is dedicated to serving the informational, educational, cultural and recreational needs of the community. And the vision is the Portland Public Library aspires to be the heart of our community, a space that is accessible, adaptable and responsive to the personal and professional needs of its diverse users, as well as enhancing lifelong learning for all segments of the community for now and always. And as a part of that, we came up with three major initiatives, um, and some goals underneath that. The first initiative is welcoming spaces, so that is, uh, us committing to striving to create spaces and places that serve all of the members of the community. Um, what Portland really wanted was an opportunity to connect with each other, um, whether that was over volunteer work or over a shared love of literature or over a cra-- a, a table with crafting supplies on it. People wanted to be together, to be able to connect. And so we really want to make sure that we are, uh, because of our incredible central location and the support that we have, we wanted to just kind of further, further, uh, grow our ability to do that and to meet people's needs, how they needed to connect and use, and in use of our space. So the second piece is strategic communication. So the, the library strives to ensure all members of our community are aware of the breadth and depth of library services. Um, some of that is going to be tweaking the website, some of it is going to be updating how our newsletter goes out, um, a combination inside of here of, uh, training and making best use of the software that we have and also looking at what the best version of software that is currently available is. And so we've already started working on that. Um, and then responsive services, uh, covered a lot of things, uh, but it was strives to provide all members of the community with services to help them flourish. And so this is everything from outreach and making sure we're engaging with Portland residents who don't yet use the library, to invite them to become library members, to take advantage of all the things that our community funds in support of everybody, but then also to, um, preserve and present history. Um, we're already, we've already started doing a little bit of that work with, uh, the solidarity committee and the historical society, so kind of strengthening those partnerships and making sure that we're doing a good job of preserving the story of Portland. Uh, and then what we also want to do is expand our non-traditional library collections. Uh, one of those is our, the, my favorite example of that right now is our Wonder Book collection, which is our newest investment, which continues to circulate beautifully. People, we cannot keep them on the shelves. But also, this could mean a lot of things. It could mean a library of things that people are able to share. So for some libraries, that's cake pans, for others, that's binoculars and so we're interested. For us so far, that's giant board games, um, or giant, giant games, like we have a giant Connect Four that is a hot item in the summer, I will tell you. Um, so like what, what else could we bring that, um, Portland would benefit from? And then, uh, to strengthen our community and town partnerships. So that was the, those are the three overarching goals that we have. Um, and then we did have an updated, uh, core principles, if you turn to the back of your pamphlet. Um, some of these really, really drew inspiration from the previous mission and vision statement, like intellectual freedom was named very, very specifically, I believe, in, I believe in the vision statement for the original strategic plan. I have it here. No, actually, it was in the mission statement originally, so it was in the original one. Um, but we also wanted to focus back on what, uh, we are charged with at our core. And so that was intellectual freedom, stewardship and then a community focus, um, knowing that we are in a service profession and so that is what our charge is and what we should be, that, that's where we should be aiming. So I think I covered almost everything. You also have a welcome letter. Um, it's a lot of what I just spoke about, but it also talks about all of the people that made this possible. On the backside of this is the list of our, um, our strategic planning team. This is, so our entire library staff contributed to this plan, but these were the core team members that met almost every single week, beginning, I think in September, um, to make this plan into a reality. And then also, we were a part of the first ever strategic planning cohort and so these are the other libraries that participated alongside us. And we shared, uh, we shared, uh, in the expertise of a consultant, uh, Maureen Sullivan and also in our amazing Connecticut Library Consortium leader Ellen Paul and her team. So a lot of, a lot of people, um, went into making this plan a reality. So I wanted to open it up at this point and see if anybody had any questions for me or comments. I know I just rambled a lot, so.
You heard a lot from me when we spoke.
I, well, like those, those, it was such a perfect, um, it was such perfect timing because like asking, having those one-on-ones was a suggestion for a way to gather information to create this plan and also a best practice as a new department head in a town. So it all just kind of, it was a lot all at once, but it all, it was great that it happened all at once. And so you all, uh, you're all a part of this plan. I thi-- I hope you see how your, um, comments are reflected in here. And I hope that everybody that filled out the survey, um, or had, uh, post-part of our focus groups.
I'd just like to congratulate you and all the folks that helped you. This is a really good end result in a very short window of time.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I, I, I work with a lot of families in my day job, um, and the importance of the library can't be overstated, you know, in terms of bringing the kids there, their own time there. It's, it's such an important part of this town in so many ways. So you're just continuing on the, uh, great tradition.
Agreed.
Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
As a new director, Jen, I think you knocked it out of the park.
Thank you. And I submitted my budget to the town early. I submitted that today too, so I'm feeling a little smug.
We'll talk about that.
It's just, it's just submitted. I'll take it, all right.
Thank you Jen, thanks Jen.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to item B under new business, which is refunds of excess payments.
I'll make a motion for refund of excess payments for Susan M. Warren for one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second up. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, under status and committee reports, I have a couple updates this evening. The first update that I wanted to provide to you all is that, uh, and a reminder, is that one week from today, we have a, a public hearing at six thirty P M on our, uh, purchase of a replacement for Engine Three, followed by a special town meeting. And so I wanted to take a moment, I have a, a letter that will be in this week's River East. I'm going to publish this letter online as well, but I wanted to take the time to read this in the record just so the town is aware and, and as this board knows of our current situation with Engine Three in the countryside. So I'm just gonna read this letter. Dear residents of Portland, I am writing today to address a pressing concern regarding our primary fire protection vehicle in the countryside. Engine Three, and to propose a solution that is in the best interest of Portland residents. As you may or may not be aware, Engine Three recently suffered a catastrophic tank failure while returning from a call in October. Upon disassembling the tank, it was revealed that extensive repairs, estimated to range from one hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollars would be required. Given the truck's age now exceeding thirty years old, the Board of Selectmen carefully considered and concluded that investing a substantial amount in its repair is neither practical nor fiscally responsible for our taxpayers. In collaboration with former Chief Shea, current Chief Pueta and other members of the Fire Department, we initiated the process of finding a suitable replacement for Engine Three. This task initially proved challenging, particularly due to a competitive marketplace and the unique specifications that the garage bay at Fire Company Three requires. Timing is also a factor with a six-month lead time on any vehicle purchased, pushing the timeline to June of twenty twenty-four at the earliest. The good news is that our contractor recently identified a truck that meets all the necessary specifications and requirements. The total cost for the replacement engine, including contingency, amounts to five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We firmly believe that acquiring this vehicle is in the best interest of the town, ensuring adequate protection for our residents. To address the funding for this emergency expense, we have worked closely with Finance Director Tom Robinson. The identified funding sources include three hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred twelve dollars from unanticipated revenues that we received in the current fiscal year, as well as a transfer of one hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars from unassigned fund balance in the general fund. To facilitate community input and decision-making, a public hearing has been scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-fourth at six thirty P M in the Buck Foreman Community Room at two sixty-five Main Street. Following the hearing, a special town meeting will take place at six forty-five P M, during which a vote will be conducted on the proposed purchase. We understand the significance of unanticipated purchases, purchases, but given the safety concerns and the paramount importance of protecting our residents, this board believes this decision is imperative for the well-being of the town. In a positive turn of events, the town of East Hampton has generously offered the town one of their spare engines as a loaner while we work towards procuring this new truck. This not only allows us to maintain adequate fire protection for residents, but also enables us to return our own tanker to mutual aid service. We extend our sincerest gratitude to the town of East Hampton, especially to Fire Chief Robert Rainville and Town Manager David Cox for their invaluable support during this challenging time. I would like to encourage the residents of Portland to attend the public hearing and special town meeting to voice their opinions and participate in the decision-making process. Your engagement is crucial as we work collectively towards ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. Thank you for your attention to this matter and we look forward to a positive outcome that prioritizes the safety of our residents. So I think this board all agrees with that letter. I just wanted to make sure that that gets out so we can inform everyone about what we are doing next week. So other updates, you may have seen a post, we, we did get our new bus in at the senior centers and that's really cool to see, so that is, uh, it had a couple touch-up items that had to be straightened out, but it is back in service tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. I do want to highlight that he is not here with us this evening, but Dave Kuzminsky is retiring from the town of Portland on Friday, January nineteenth, in just two days after fifty years of working with the town or for the town of Portland. I'm going to miss working with Dave. He's not going to be too far away, I'm sure. He will make his presence known, but we, so there's going to be an event in Dave's honor on March seventh, so mark your calendars for that. It is going to be at St. Clement's and tickets are going to be for sale and you can purchase those in the town clerk's office. We'll get more details to come on that, but mark your calendars for the evening of March seventh. So I think that'll be nice to recognize Dave for a job well done after fifty years. I had a good conversation with Dan Bertram recently, actually a couple conversations. I'm meeting him tomorrow, uh, I believe on, at Town Hall, but he will also be attending our February seventh Board of Selectmen meeting, so we will be most likely discussing our fixed assessment agreement at that time. Also, Park and Rec News, I wanted to just relay to the board that Andy Dione, our Parks and Rec Director, Director is currently working on getting those banners up on the fences for the spring and we, we've had our first, um, purchases for that, so we're gonna have some advertising, uh, coming in and some revenue. So I think that's a, a nice win there. I wanted to pass that along and let me see, I think that's all I have unless anyone has any questions for me. Okay, then, oh, Bobby, did you want to touch on our work on the subcommittee, on our fixed policy assessment, what we did last week and what we're doing?
Still working on it. I don't know what you want to say.
Yeah, we just had our initial meeting of the subcommittee that, and we're working on updating and modernizing our fixed assessment agreement. And so I think the, the subcommittee group had some, some really great suggestions. We put those together, we compiled those and we had to unfortunately postpone our, our meeting yesterday due to the weather, but we will be meeting on this coming Tuesday at five P M in the Town Hall again. That is a public meeting that's open if anybody would like to attend and we hope to have a, an update for this board. and we hope to have a, an update for this board in the near future to actually update that policy.
Can I just give some kudos to our assessor who I think was quite helpful? He's reached out to some other towns and came forward with some ideas for policy changes and form updates. I think it's, I think the end product's gonna be very good.
I agree, yeah, good point, thank you to Rich Lasky, our assessor. That's all I have.
Committee reports, I'll just say that a week ago, I sat in on the Board of Education's discussion, first discussion of their budget and it's very detailed and I'll leave it at that. I'm sure we're all gonna talk about it, play a bit more.
Any other status and committee updates? All right, we'll move on to public comment, is there anyone in the audience? Any former selectmen in the audience?
I'll second that.
Yeah, come on up, Meg. Name, just name and address.
Meg Scotta, 5 Freedom Way, Portland. I have a question in light of what we heard tonight from the survey, which was really impressive and gives us some guidance, not, not a magic wand, not, not gonna give us the answer we all hoped for, but I'm wondering, there was a committee put together to do the assessment of the town buildings and I'm wondering where we are with that and I know you probably can't answer, but I think in light of what we learned tonight, that committee, the work ahead of it is to determine closing one school or two schools. I'd like to see that move forward, if there's anything that I can do to help to find people that are interested in being on it or people that have some expertise in developing affordable housing or senior housing or new housing, whatever, I'd like to see that committee move forward. I'm anxious to see us do something about the schools and the condition they're in right now, so, thank you.
Thank you, Meg, and I think, I think you're right, we gotta get going with that, don't we, huh? Any other public comment? I see Liz actually added something to chat, I'll just read that, I'm just gonna read what Liz wrote. Or, do you want to comment, Liz?
Yeah, sorry, I did something weird with my computer, I'm gonna think of that now. So, yes, I am, I'm so sorry, I totally forgot when reviewing my notes that we have another event coming up that's actually next month for Black History Month and Jen reminded me when speaking about the Oral History Project because that will tie into it. But this will be a panel event co-sponsored by the Solidarity Committee, the library, and the Portland Historical Society. It'll be Saturday, February 24th. I think it's definite, but if it's not definite yet, Jen will correct me and Jen is still reading.
I'm getting a thumbs up from Jen.
Okay, great, so Saturday, February 24th and it will be a panel event to, Bob McDougall from the Historical Society will be moderating the panel of residents and former residents of Portland of our Black community and discussing the history. So it's gonna be really, a really great event and we're looking forward to sharing more details and sharing a flyer about that soon. And as a follow-up to that, we're hoping to start interviewing residents and former residents about their memories of growing up in Portland and the Black community and preserving that, maybe doing a podcast series or something like that, so we have a lot of great ideas for that as well.
Thank you Liz, that's, that's awesome, looking forward to it. All right, is there any other public comment online? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Anyone have? I'll just ask, I think at our next meeting, we'll probably talk about the results of the survey, we'll probably have a more detailed conversation, so maybe think over the survey and we'll kind of talk a little more next time about our plans, does that sound good with everyone?
Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to echo what Meg said a minute ago, which I think one of those pie graphs were roughly 80-plus percent of folks before they vote would like to see the results of that committee so I think that's gotta be a priority for both of our boards to get that moving.
Agreed.
Yeah, that, that's, that was gonna be my comment. I think that especially as we're looking at, that's gonna be a key component, understanding, you know, what would be done with either of the potential facilities to be closed, that's gonna be a big component as we move forward.
Anyone have anything else under General Informal Discussion?
I think you answered everything.
All right, I don't have anything under Follow-up Items, we did mention the policy on the fixed assessments, so with that, I'll entertain.
I'll make motion adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you both, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, have a good night, everyone, thank you.